Okay. Sorry, we're rushing to get back from the work session. So I'll call to order the mayor and council meeting of May 26. I think we will have in just a moment, the invocation by Matthew Montahan, Councilman Montahan, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance from Kendall Coleman. Let me take just a moment to introduce Kendall Coleman. She is a 2020 graduate of Villarica High School and was a member of the Lady Wildcat basketball team. She was the president of the high school's National Honor Society, member of the Future Business Leaders of America, and member of the Student Government Association. Ms. Coleman turned down basketball scholarships at other schools to focus on a degree from the University of Georgia. It was a difficult decision for her as she was a star in the classroom as well as the basketball court. Ms. Coleman has been playing basketball since she was nine years old and had dreams of playing professionally. And while there is a possibility of playing for the Bulldogs, she has opted to focus on environment, economics, and management. That's good stuff. Her mother is here with her today, Ebony Coleman, so welcome. So Mr., if everybody will rise, Mr. Montahan will give the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Ms. Coleman.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us today as we do the business of the city. Thank you for your blessings every day as we navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic and all the other issues in the world today. Please give us guidance on how to do your work, and please bless us as we move forward this evening. Thank you. Amen.
Okay, Ms. Coleman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. You all may be seated. Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. All right, so we will now move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I think we have one change. Would someone make a motion to remove item F2, cut off for non-payment?
So moved.
Do I have a motion to remove item F2? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. We have removed that item. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. We now have an agenda, so we can move forward. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Okay. We will move on from there. So let me take just a moment. I had made a few notes here about some stuff I wanted to talk about. This is our first meeting back in the courtroom since it has been updated. I think it looks fantastic. It certainly looks very fresh and clean and new in here. We are still exercising social distancing, so the setup is a little bit different than what it will be going forward, but this is our first night back in here. This is also the last meeting that we will have until July. So I wanted to make a note that in July, our first work session will begin on Thursday, July the 9th, and followed by a regular meeting on Tuesday, July the 14th. I also wanted to just take a moment to remind everyone that GDOT is planning to close the Exit 26 Liberty Road Bridge beginning on June 1st. So if you need to cross that bridge to get where you're going, you're going to need to consider which way you're traveling. That's all I can say. Tom will talk about that a little bit later, but the bottom line is wherever you're going, you can't cross the bridge. So depending on which direction you need to go, you have to consider that. And then I did want to talk just for a moment because we're about to get the council updates, but let me talk just a moment about the recycling program. So I've had some questions, and I think all the council members have probably had some questions. So I just wanted to just recap how we ended up making the decision that we made regarding recycling. I think that there are a significant number of people in the city that are disappointed to see recycling end in terms of the city's participation in these blue cans that we had with GFL. And the decision came down to two primary criteria, well, really probably three. We were going to need to increase the rates so that we could have a recycling program that was basically in name only because most of the material, even those who were conscientious about what they placed in the blue containers, most of that material was still ending up in the landfill. We could also, we could cancel the program and avoid a CPI-based increase this year, which is ultimately what we did, or we could come up with some way to better educate the public and to try to police their behavior. Maybe try to penalize, or someone could go around and check all the blue cans and make sure you're doing what you're supposed to do, and that just didn't seem practical in any sense of the word. And we also didn't have a great deal of time from the time we were notified by GFL to even give a lot of serious consideration to that, which I'm not sure that we would ever have gotten to a place that we would feel comfortable doing that anyway. In the interim, though, we are looking at other ways to take advantage of some opportunities for recycling in the city. Staff will continue to do that. There is still some possibility to recycle aluminum cans and cardboard, but there really is no market for glass or plastic or paper. So even if we were to still have a city-sponsored program, those items would most likely still end up in the landfill. So I hope that information is helpful. I'm sure somebody else may want to talk about it a little bit, but I just wanted to bring it up because I have seen probably half a dozen constituent emails or comments about that program. So that being said, we will move on now to council updates. Are there any council members who would like to give an update? Ms. McPherson.
I would like to mention what an improvement, the downtown LED fixtures that we had, I guess, had Georgia Power replace about 100 light fixtures in the downtown area. They're much brighter, and what an improvement that is. The only other thing I wanted to mention in honor of Memorial Day is if you don't get the Times Georgian, there were three excellent stories of heroes in there, which is unusual. Sometimes there'll be one history article, but just to highlight that you would have found out who L.E. Witt was, one of Bowden's heroes. He flew more combat missions than any other pilot of World War II, and that means amongst any pilot during World War II. He survived 366 combined missions. And while he did return, and Memorial Day is more about those that didn't come back, I would recognize also, even amongst those that come back, while we may not be thanking them personally, we're honoring those that didn't, many of them have also lost friends. And I know even with my own kids, they're okay, they're now out of the Army, but they've lost friends. You would have found out who Butch O'Hare was. You've probably heard of O'Hare Airport. He was a flying ace. I had no idea the airport was named after a man who was a flying ace in World War II. His most famous flight in 1942, he and his wingman saved the lives of every man aboard the USS Lexington. In 1943, he made his final mission. He was shot down, his plane was never found. And the last one that was highlighted, that was local, and his wife had written about him. He was rather, I don't know, humble, didn't really want to be included, but his name was Wilson Freeman. He served with the 101st Airborne. And during World War II, his wife tells the story. He was at Bastogne during the winter of 1945. He, his group helped liberate the Nazi concentration camp of Dachau at the end of the war. And I just want to read you his quote at the end, and I'll be done. It's actually, it's leading up to his quote. He said, "I tried to persuade Wilson," this man we're talking about, this soldier, "to let Dr. Martin include his war stories in Dr. Martin's book, Ordinary Heroes. Wilson was steadfast in his choice of not being a hero. He said, 'I did what we all did, our duty.' Wilson was my hero and a hero to people in our nation. We owe our gratitude to those who served. We live in a free nation, and we should never forget the sacrifices of so many."
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Montahan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment. As many of you know, my brother-in-law passed away in a fatal car accident on April 28th, the day of our council meeting, two councils, three councils meetings ago. And since then, there has been a significant and very blessing of an outpouring of support to my sister-in-law Lisa Groves and my nephew Easton Groves. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank the community for that support and for all the prayers and blessings that you have given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. So let me read each of these items off. Earlier today, we met in a work session and added these items to the consent agenda. So I'll read off these items, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So-
Mr. Mayor, was there no public comments?
There were no public comments.
That's okay.
And let me, you know, since you bring that up, let me just say that we, I think collectively, all of us, and certainly, I'll speak for me, I miss having the public in this room. There is nothing about holding these meetings without the public that even feels good. I mean, we have to do this. This is about the continuity of government and doing the people's business, so we have to do it. But I can't wait to see some of those faces back in this room. Some of them smile, and some of them, you know, growl, but I still appreciate having them in this room. So since you brought that up, and I think that I enjoy even the public comments, and I look at a list each time and say, "Does anybody want to be called tonight?" Because even those, sometimes they're entertaining, and then sometimes they're of substance and that I think that we take seriously and that we include in our deliberation. So thank you for bringing that up. But no, there were no takers for public comments tonight. Okay, so let me move on with the consent agenda. Item B3, election of GMA District 4 officers for 2020 through 2021. Item C1, recreation senior center HVAC replacement. Item C2, two dehumidification systems for the library. Item C3, three-carrier HVAC systems for the police department. C4, purchase SLG R2632 scissor lift. Item D1, replacement of high-service pump drive 3. Item D2, Kekkin Wood Booster Pump Station proposal. Item E1, items for auction from the police evidence room. Item G1, amendment to professional service agreement with Brennan Jones. Item G2, Carroll County Road Construction Proposal, Daniel Road. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
That's wrong. Let me say that differently. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent items? Is that right, David?
Yeah, it's to approve the items that were on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I don't know what happened. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? It is unanimous, so the consent agenda has been adopted. Why am I forgetting how that is termed?
No.
You don't know? Okay. So the next item is going to be the approval of minutes for the meeting of May 12, 2020. You all have had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do I have a motion to amend or to approve those minutes?
So moved if there's no corrections.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes without correction, and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All abstain? Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Item B2, mayor appointment of Dee Johnson, new member of the Cemetery Commission. Do we ask the council to confirm that appointment?
Yes.
Okay. So I have made the decision to appoint Dee Johnson, the new member of the Cemetery Commission. Do I hear a motion to approve that appointment?
I make a motion.
I have a motion to approve the appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, let's move right along here. Ms. Andrews, financial update. Come on down.
Since March, actually. This is our financial update through April 2020. So we are now seven months into our fiscal year. Not sure what happened to that stream. Okay. So first, this is a cash comparison of April of 2019 to April of 2020. You can see that top line, our total cash has gone from- That is everything, including a CD. Our general fund has gone from 6.7 million to almost 8 million. Water and Sewer has grown as well. This is after three rate increases. You know, we were trying to get to this point. We had a negative cash balance four years ago, and we are now sitting at $3 million in our Water and Sewer Fund. Sanitation and solid waste also had negative cash up until last year. You can see, last year, we had negative $30,000 for the sanitation fund. We are now sitting at just over $4,000 in that account. Yes. Kudos to the council for making the hard decisions to do the rate increases. Next is the SPOLOST. We have three SPOLOST bank accounts. We have two active SPOLOST funds that are paying, which is the 2015 Carroll and the 2016 Douglas County SPOLOST. You can see, we do have, those balances have grown, at least in the current ones. I would say mostly that's due to our street project we hadn't done. We didn't do a street project last year, so that's why those balances seem larger. Growth, I'm just showing residential here, but this shows that at this point in last fiscal year, we had 134 housing permits, and at this point, this year, we have 148 building permits for, that's new residential construction. So so far in 2020, we are, we had shown more than last year, so we'll see where this year takes us. This is our net income statement for our Water and Sewer Fund. The left shows year-to-date 2019, fiscal year 2019, and then year-to-date 2020. This, again, is after three rate increases to our Water and Sewer Fund. You can see how much the revenue has grown over that. The, and then, and the expenses haven't grown quite as much, thankfully. So at this point this year, we're showing a net income of almost $1 million. Again, we were preparing, trying to get the fund healthy, to be self-sustaining, also trying to get ready for a new debt payment, which did happen this spring already. The debt payment increased by almost half a million dollars, and then also preparing to be able to pay for some capital improvements with our own funding instead of having to require debt for all of it. Next is the net income statement for our sanitation fund. As we saw previously, at this point last year, we were sitting in a negative cash position. This year, we have a positive cash position. Our net income last year at this point was 18,000. Now we're sitting at 38,000. So any questions on that? All right. So sales tax. At this, at our last meeting, or at our meeting at the end of April, I was able to provide the council where we stood at sales tax. I checked today. We have not received the April numbers yet. Hopefully, at some point this week, when we do get them, I'll mail them, email them to you. What you're seeing here is money that was received in April, but it's actually March tax collections. We did talk about this last time, but we saw, I believe it was 4% decrease in Carroll County and a 10% decrease in Douglas County, excuse me.
But this was only roughly a week, right, from March?
Right.
Okay. I do wish we'd had those numbers today because April would have given us a much better picture of what, of the impact that we're going to have, certainly from the sales tax.
Yeah, because in March, the uptick of the whole virus things, seems like things started shutting down about mid-March.
About mid.
Is that right?
That's maybe the third week.
Yeah.
Yeah. We closed things on the 23rd and then sent staff on the 25th.
And there would have been some prior, just because you noticed, right? I mean, you went in the restaurants, and there's hardly anybody there even prior, but once things became officially shut down with government orders, then it really changed even more drastically.
So we want to see that number as soon as you do have it, because that'll give us some idea. But go ahead.
Next, I'll be working with the mayor to maybe add some different features to our financial update monthly. One thing I wanted to show, Tom mentioned it earlier, we did issue over 600 refund checks for all the recreation items, so that totaled almost $50,000. Most of it was sports. We refunded all the soccer and baseball. We also refunded gymnastics and the rentals that had been done up to that point, so $49,000.
Tom and I have some serious experience with those 600 checks, because we signed them.
Yes.
They came in in stacks while we were down at City Hall.
Yes. We normally process-
Bless you.
Probably 400 checks in a month, so y'all signed six weeks' worth of checks in a couple days.
Couple of days, that's right.
And lastly, self-funded insurance. Our total savings since we started the program in October of 2017 is in that green box, $789,000. The orange box shows how much we contribute to the plan so far this year, $944,000. That is what the city has contributed on behalf of the employees and what the employees have also contributed to the plan. The blue box shows the actual expenses. Since we're self-funded, we only pay what's actually incurred, and then also some third-party administrative fees. So so far in this fiscal year, we've saved $195,000. Again, we're not funding it fully because we've had savings over the years. We've been able to only fund 90% of what's expected, of what the maximum liability could be. So that's, those are savings that you don't necessarily see here, but that's money that's still sitting in the general fund.
Right, that we didn't transfer over as our contributions or the employees' contributions. Okay. Yeah, we're still going very much in a good direction with the insurance. I mean, there's just no reason to regret that right now, so. All right, anything else? Counsel, do you have any questions?
I was just going to ask something about the solid waste, because we have turned it around, and two things I wrote down were, obviously, we turned it around some through rate increases. I know we tried to make sure we're not picking up contractor work and that, so I don't know how much we saved in that area of just maybe trying to be a little bit more of a watchdog on not picking up stuff we're not supposed to. But have we worked any further, and this may not be the time to ask that question because it might be bobby, have we worked any more on efficiencies in that system? Because we talked about how they go up and down all the roads, every time they may have nothing to pick up, and are we still working toward trying to make that a more efficient system? Or should I wait till budget time? I don't know. When's the best time to-
You need Jeremy to come in and talk about what they're doing different.
Okay, so whenever that works out, it would, let's find out a little bit more about that. And the only thing that I thought of while we were also talking about, you mentioned street project. Did you mean the spring cleanup thing that we used to do, or did I? Okay, never mind, because I was listening and doing this at the same time. We used to do primarily encouraged by Councilman Best, a spring cleanup or a fall cleanup, and just, nobody brought this to my attention. I just happened to think about it when it got around to that time of year. I knew we weren't doing it, and maybe a budget time would be the time to bring this up. Just, do we still want to do something like that in the future? Do you feel like it-
We'll do it in October.
Okay, so we are going to do it.
We moved it.
Last year because of Keep Carroll Beautiful.
I think last year was the first October.
Okay. Just if it helps us with not illegal dumping or, if you think it's useful, that's all I want to know. You know, not whether we do it or not, but if we think it's a good idea, and if we do, let's continue it. Okay.
Well, it is a good idea because we collect items during that time that we don't generally collect throughout the year, so we do ask people to hold on to those if they can't dispose of them in some other responsible way. But we also work with Keep Carroll Beautiful, and that is, they help us with the tires at a minimum, so we do want to make sure that we continue doing that. Mr. Young.
Sarah, I noticed that for the last couple of months, we've consumed half a million dollars a month out of the general fund. And I know why that is. We front-loaded taxes so that we poured money into the general fund, and now we're drawing it out. But without the sales tax, does it look manageable? Does it look worrisome at this point?
Not at this point. I mean, we're still, there's still so much unknown. We haven't had enough data to really say what's going to happen in the future. So sales tax, that's a question. Court, we didn't have court for a while. They were still collecting money on the cases. I looked at that today. Last year in April, we brought in, I think it was 46,000, and this year in April, we brought in 24,000. So those are people that are still paying on what they owed. So, I mean, that's an instance of what's down. But yeah, because we have front-loaded the revenue, the cash flow for our general fund, this year-
We expected to draw it down, but I just wondered, is it going faster than you expected, or we haven't seen a noticeable change?
Not yet, yeah. I think once we get the sales tax numbers, that'll be very telling.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Who? They haven't, they're not having court at the moment, right? What is the plan for court?
Court has resumed.
It has resumed?
Yes, sir, it resumed last Friday.
Last Friday? Okay.
So any other questions from council? All right. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is we're going to continue the discussion on fall recreational programming. Tom, did you want to take that up? I noticed Vicky is also here. Counsel, based on the discussion we had earlier? Okay, so Tom briefed us on some of the challenges and some of the considerations regarding when school would start, the conditions under which it would start, social distancing that's recommended by the Georgia High School Association for Sports, and whether or not there'll be a sports program through the school system, which we believe would directly impact a sports program at the Recreation Department for the City of Villarica. So council, does anyone have any questions, any items for discussion?
I've got two comments. All the financial documents that I'm reading are saying it, financial recovery depends on the school's opening for the nation. Financial recovery for the nation depends on the school's opening in an almost normal manner. So I think there's going to be a lot of pressure from everywhere to do that.
Can you speak up a little louder, Mike?
And the other thing I was looking at is this high school association recommendation list, and I'm not sure, you know, it says things like, groups should be, should be the same individuals, students and coaches cannot change groups, so, but there's only 20 people to a group, so that means you're going to have to have a coach for every 20 people, and I don't think that's feasible. No use of locker rooms or shower facilities. So if you're out doing football conditioning in the mud and the grass, you're going to go home muddy and grassy and, you know, again, is that realistic? In a weight room. In a weight room, using, where was it? Side spots, and, and, you know, for weightlifting, which, which is not as safe as a normal spot. Face masks in the weight room. When, when you're breathing heavy and stuff, and you're lifting huge weights, you're gonna use a face mask, which will restrict there. Some of this stuff doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I appreciate you reading off some of those, but the list is actually quite long. And there are a number of reasons, which is why this is in the, in the packet. There's a number of reasons to have some questions about what is feasible under these guidelines. Did you have something? Okay, Ms. Coleman? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if you took only this one sentence, workouts are conditioning on laser. Dough balls or, or sports-specific equipment, other than a cross country runner, I don't think I can do any of the other sports.
So, Ms. Coleman, you've had an opportunity to review this document, I think. So, give us your perspective.
So, let me just say that we are also governed by another association. We do work through GRPA. We're set up in regions around the state, if you will. So, not only our local government, but you have Carroll County, Paulding County. So, we're in the process of preparing to work through our own guidelines. So, while some things may be similar, it's probably a better fit, what will come out of that in relation to, you know, what maybe the High School Sports Association has put together. Because there are certainly some things that are a whole lot easier when the kids are older versus when you're managing younger children. And, we're also in a situation where most of, or all of our programs are really run by volunteers. So, such things as not being able to switch groups, we are begging volunteers to come every year and say, "Coach, the children," and things of that sort. So, sometimes you do have the, someone who's coaching, maybe nine and ten, they're also coaching a younger group. So, there is some kinda switching back and forth in terms of the adults that are there. There are certainly some things that will, can be incorporated into the guidelines that we're going to put together. I wanna say June second is when our region is meeting, and they're having the district meeting to go over COVID nineteen, the protocols and things of that sort. But, it, so, some of this is helpful, but yeah, I think it would be tailored and much more specific just for our region, so it ensures consistency in terms of what people can expect, not only when they come here, but when we go someplace else. So, I think those are the things that are gonna be important, and that certainly we'll be able to share those things when they come out of the meeting. But, definitely things that we'll be able to touch on, and just so, I know a lot of that spoke to conditioning. We don't start, we spend the entire month in July during registration. So, it's really, once schools have really already gone back, you spend the first two weeks of August conditioning, you know, for the younger children, and then practice starts. So, a lot of that, quite honestly, we'll really already know whether the schools are back in or not before we even really get started, 'cause we get started beginning of August.
Well, that's, that's good information. And, and let me say that we had considered, when we got this from the Georgia High School Association, that it would be different at the recreation level. But, quite honestly, I believe it'd be more difficult at, with the younger kids and with the, the parent involvement and with the volunteer staff. So, I, I think we, what you've just said makes me believe that we have some time. We don't have to, to, to be considering a whole lot tonight, but we do need to be aware of it. And I would like, once you have those guidelines, you said the second?
June second.
Well, once you have them, though, if you would send those out, obviously, to Tom, but to all of us, so that we can have a little bit more of a heads-up of what they're doing as well. I think we got this probably within a day of the High School Association putting this out. But, our consideration, and certainly mine, was that you may be able to do some of this stuff at the high school level, but at the recreation level, it just seems like this is not.
It's much harder to manage the smaller kids and trying to get them to pay attention and manage social distancing. So, that's part of the conversation, like, you're trying to limit the number of people, but sometimes you may need the little extra help out there to help keep the kids properly spaced apart, things of that sort, so.
Absolutely, so I, okay, does any other council members have any questions? For Vicky or for Tom? Go ahead.
If you hear anything from the, the school coaches or anything about, about these requirements, I'd be interested in knowing what the tenor of their thoughts are.
Sure, we'll definitely share that. And also, our soccer association, you know, that's the parent-run organization. And I know they've kinda followed the Georgia Soccer Associate, Association as a whole. So, if that information is coming through as well, we'll definitely make sure that you get that.
Okay, anyone else?
I just wanna make sure that also, just reviewing this. Said you need certain triggering events, I guess, are you all gonna come up with a, based upon whatever the school system does, some contingency, well, if school starts like normal, then we'll proceed with fall sports like normal, but if it's delayed by a couple of months, then we'll proceed by, well, with these fall sports only? I mean, that's, I, I mean, I know you talked about that earlier, but are you creating that proposal for us to review and to come back and vote on, or we're looking out for that, or?
Yeah, it, it'll be something that has to come, it depends on to what extent something could be delayed.
Right.
And keep in mind, we're playing in a region, if you will. So, everyone kinda has to more or less agree on the same thing. So, that kinda helps.
All right, thank you.
Will you have an opportunity to get uniforms that late?
I'm sorry?
Will you have an opportunity to get the uniforms and things like the equipment that late?
So, interestingly enough, we have the uniforms from the spring. That was part of, you know, we refunded money, but we had already put the expense out of ordering the uniforms. Uniforms had already been ordered, so we have those uniforms. And really, it's a question of whether, you know, what is participation going to look like? They certainly could make use of some of the uniforms that we have, which you just don't know based on the number of age groups that end up participating. You know, we might have more six and seven than we do nine and ten. So, those are all of the things that we really have to go back and work through. So, we've inventoried everything to see what we have, but it really is going to depend on participation and how much extra we may have to order, or, you know, we talk about this all the time. Like, what are parents really gonna feel like in terms of getting their kids back out and participating?
But, assuming that, and I know this may be a little bit of a stretch, but everything stays on a regular schedule, as though it were, you, you don't really have to make any decisions until July, because that's really when you start all of your registration, right?
Right, it's the end of July when we know what the numbers look like.
Okay.
So.
So, yes, if you would get those guidelines to us as soon as possible, that would help us to better understand what's gonna be expected. And, and then, we meet on the, I think, the fourteenth of July for our next, our next meeting. Tom, do you have anything? Okay, anybody have any other questions for Vicky? All right, thank you, Vicky. This wa, this item was for discussion only, so there is no pending motion here. Next item on the agenda is city manager's report, Mr. Barber. And I know nobody in the room, nor at home, has any problems hearing me, but I think there is a little bit of difficulty with that mic, so if you could get a little closer to it when you start talking. Oh, I think he did.
Okay, as you can imagine, this is a fairly thin update. We have spent a lot of time sitting in the, in the office in the last month. One of the things that Jim has been working on is the City Hall renovation and then the courtroom renovation. And, it may not be evident, but he has put in a lot of time with rewiring the place in both buildings. He's also fighting a problem with equipment compatibility with the manufacturer that's about to drive him crazy. So, if he look, looks a little distraught sometimes, it's probably not so much this as it is that. We have installed new downtown banners since we met last. Everybody seen them? We got good.
They look really good.
Public comment, dine, play, shop. We ordered new stick-on dates for the census banners and signs, because the date was extended from April one to August fourteenth, and about the time we got them, they extended it October thirty-first.
You can save a lot of that money that way, you keep the same banner and just, you mind mentioning the banners? Wasn't a lot of it covered by a grant, or half of it was, or some, the, the new banners that are downtown?
Right, something Ron and Chris and Sharon worked on, I think. We have worked on a few projects. We've worked on the, the site work at Goldust Playground. We've worked on the site work at Butterballs. Pond is continuing to work on the transportation study. The Biggie is the upcoming Liberty Road project. What it's gonna mean to have that bridge closed is much more significant to us than last year's post-road closure. If you live on the Liberty Road, Pool Road, Edge Road side of town, you're gonna be able to drive to work to Atlanta but not come back over the bridge. So, you're gonna have to either get off at Post and take Ephesus Church and come up Liberty, or you're gonna have to drive all the way down to sixty-one and get off and go through Walmart and come back down Berry and Edge. It's not, not a great trip either way. If you live on the Mira Lake side, you can't even go to Atlanta over the bridge. But, you will be able to come home up the ramp. So, you're gonna have to take Connors and Seventy-Eight down to Post to be able to go to Atlanta. The same kinda thing works the other direction if you're, if you're going west. So, if you're at Mira Lake, going to work in Temple or Breaman, no problem, you just can't get home. Right, 'cause if you get off at Liberty Road, the only way you can turn is right away from Mira Lake. So, you'd have to get off at sixty-one, drive down to Seventy-Eight, and go through downtown. The folks that live in Mira Lake that wanna go down Liberty Road really have a pickle, 'cause that is not an easy trip any other way than that bridge. So, think about, let's say you're going to Beaver's Transmission and get your car worked on, and you live in Mira Lake. How are you gonna get there? That's a long way around either way to make that trip. And the same way for the guys in the truck stop. If they're going east to Atlanta, then fine, but if they're going west, they're gonna have to do the Walmart trip. And that road is not made for that.
That's a real problem for the trucks.
So, you're talking about Edge to that really ugly left and right on the Berry, and then on the, um, no. That's, that's not great. All the way down South Carol to sixty-one, and then all the way back up, and then over the bridge again to be able to go west. So, we're gonna have a difficult six weeks, I don't think we should kid ourselves.
Is, is the police department prepared to monitor the traffic on Edge Road in Thomas Dorsey? 'Cause that's where most of the traffic's gonna be.
You ready for this?
Edge Road and, and Thomas Dorsey, that's the path.
I mean, we definitely are familiar that it's going on, and we will do that. I mean, as far as the trucks and stuff, it's gonna be hard for them to have a way around without going through a truck, no truck.
Right.
For them to get anywhere. So, we're probably not gonna be hard on that, but as far as being available, being around, and helping people get where they need to go.
Okay, if he get, if he talks again, he's gonna need to come up and get to a microphone, 'cause people are not gonna be able to hear him.
All right, the answer to that was yes, police are gonna be ready.
Thank you.
All right, we, we have had a staff meeting with developers of a proposed high-density development on Connors Road. If you can picture Carrington and Hawthorne Apartments, it's the vacant parcel in between. So, that'll be, that'll be going through the process. The mayor and I and the city attorney had a meeting with Carroll County folks about the upcoming Splot referendum. The group discussed the possibility of moving that vote to March of twenty-one. So, that will be coming to y'all for your input, and then that'll be going to the county. There's concern about the economy and unemployment, and how that would impact a positive vote, and also the proximity to the East Splot vote. So, those were the two, I think, main considerations. I would tell you about all the public events that were held in the last month, but I couldn't think of any. And then, last of all, we have a number of water projects that are underway. I told you about cleaning out the I-twenty sewer. Our attempt to get the Water First Designation is on hold. That meeting was scheduled for March, and so that was can't, or postponed or canceled. We have an RFP out for the water line extension on Edge Road, I think that opens on June two. And then, we're continuing to work on the engineering of the water treatment plant. And we have another idea that we're pursuing that we hope to be bringing you for consideration. So, that's my report, and then I have one announcement. I received a two-week notice for a resignation today from our Recreation Director. You will not be seeing her again, because her last day will be June the eighth, and we're not meeting again until the fourteenth of July. But, Vicky Coleman will be leaving us. If you have the opportunity to say goodbye tonight, this will be the last meeting that she attends.
Well, that's a surprise. We're gonna miss you, Vicky, I can't even see her back there. That's a short term, too, two weeks?
I'm definitely going to miss being here. It is two weeks, but it's, you know, it's crazy with all of the stuff that has happened over the last, what, six to eight weeks. It was kinda like this was probably the best and almost the easiest transition in some sense in terms of timing, like, despite it being the fact that it's short. But, there's a lot of stuff that I have to get done in a very short window of time, too, so.
Well, we appreciate all the work you did over at the Recreation Department. I, I won't go into asking you any questions about your future plans, because all of this is being recorded and live. But, but we do wanna wish you well in the future, and.
Thank you.
It's, it comes as a surprise, and.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm definitely excited about, you know, where things will take me, but I am probably, I'm hopefully as excited for you guys. I think we did some really great projects, and, you know, hopefully those projects have the opportunity to come to fruition. I think, I certainly can tell how much you've grown in the almost five years that I've been here. And, so, with a lot of the projects that I feel like we've planned for, I just think they're needed. I think you guys have grown substantially, from when I consider where a lot of the, your facilities, when they were initially put in place, so, and I just think.
Isn't it appropriate that the train would interrupt you one last time?
Right, right.
'Cause I can recall you being interrupted a number of times by the train.
Yes, so.
Over the time that you've been here.
Yeah, but, I'm, like I said, I think you guys have some really great projects that, you know, I think they will be, certainly be an asset to the city and will take you guys far in terms of, again, helping and promoting quality of life here. So, I wish you guys the best.
Well, thank you, we wish you the best, too. And I was just thinking about some of those, you're talking about things like the Connors Road Park and.
Yes.
The walking trails and some of the other things that you've worked on here.
And the expansion at Goldust, since I was there every single day. By the way, the, I'm almost afraid to say, even though we'll be closed, but we're supposed to be finalizing the playground finally tomorrow, so the mulch was delivered today. So, hopefully the installation will happen, but until we.
I wasn't sure that was ever going to happen, ever.
The rain, exactly.
Yeah, the rain was a big part, and, and yet it remains closed, so don't get.
Yeah, I won't get too excited, but.
Okay, anybody have any comments? Thank you so much, Vicky.
Thank you.
I mean, we appreciate you, and we wish you well in the future. Okay, Tom, do you have any other items for the, for your report? That was so long and detailed, and. David, do you have anything to add? Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the council have anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, move.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.